Hello, Alderman.
I heard, I didn't, I didn't hear it, I just heard about it. Past the hour. It's crazy. Yeah. Just coming along so fast. Heath.
No, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, I was by there a couple of weeks ago and it's coming along. Not, not as fast as Heath.
So how much turkey do you have left?
No, we cooked, I cooked a big one because I got it for eighty-eight cents, but we did sandwiches the next day and then made turkey, turkey noodles.
Oh, okay.
There was a little bit left in the back, I'm like, tell, we're done, I can't do it anymore.
For this? Sounds like you did a good job.
And you, well, you were gone, you went south?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, uh, night, uh, twenty-twenty-three committee, the whole committee is now called to order, will you please rise for the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, let's go, we please, let's call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Natriona.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mister Chairman, a quorum is present.
Uh, entertain a motion approved, the November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three committee, the whole meeting, minutes, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, ayes have it. Presentations, clerk, let's go.
None tonight, sir.
Thank you. Uh, ordinances table remaining committee, clerk Lesko, will you please read the ordinances table remaining committee, please?
Twenty-twenty-three, four-four-three, twenty-twenty-three, five-three-seven.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I, I, I just would, I would just like to, um, have a short discussion on twenty-twenty-three, four-forty-three, um, the grapple chuck for, um, public works, um, I forget the reason why we were holding this, um, and I wanted to see if it was worked out, the reason what brings me to this question, because I seen one on a, on a tow truck by trucks over the day, so I didn't know, um, you know, if, if we need to move forward with that and get them some equipment or, or not.
You have a second?
Second there for discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Ralph.
Real, real quick, I think that one of, one of the things, Alderman, was there was a talk that the potential of getting a new truck versus a, a pre, pre-owned truck, uh, for just a little bit more.
Absolutely.
And what we had to go jump through some hoops, I was, it's actually, I was, I'm glad that you brought it up because I kind of was wanting to know where we, where we were with this too.
Well, that's exactly the situation, uh, for not a whole lot of more money, we were going to be able to, uh, uh, purchase a new vehicle, uh, which is a very large vehicle, which is what we require, and it also has the added feature of an overlay grapple, uh, currently the grapple that we have, the, the tines come together and join, the overlay grapple, they actually intersperse and it gets a much better grip, uh, and you can actually move larger amounts of degree with that.
And that's on the new one, and you, have you identified it and are we, are we in that process?
Uh, from a procurement standpoint, we, uh, we took specifications to the committee today, they've been posted, they'll open on the fourteenth.
Okay, alright, I was just wondering, I see one on the tow trucks, I was just wondering, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
That was just for discussion.
I just, uh, for, we're just discussing, that's all.
Okay, clerk. Uh. Table.
Yep. It's, it's still in committee unless they want to pass it.
Okay.
That, that point of, uh, maybe a point of affirmation, um, if you guys are going with an RFP, don't, do we need this ordinance?
Better bring it forward. Well, I would say if we can't, we'll just, could we just leave it in committee for now?
That doesn't matter.
If we don't get any responses, then maybe we'll revisit this one.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Uh, ordinance and, uh, for committee consideration, clerk.
CWP, twenty-twenty-three, five-forty-two, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE twenty-four dash zero-eight dash five-two, gratis for continuous emissions monitoring system, CEMS, with Grace Consulting Incorporated, an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, seven-hundred dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-forty-three, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE twenty-four dash zero-nine dash five-seven, riddle of heavy equipment with Altorfer Incorporated, CNC pumps and supply incorporated, Herc Rentals Incorporated, Roland Machinery Company, and Sunbelt Rentals Incorporated, for a total maximum amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars for the Office of Public Utilities and the Office of Public Works.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Thank you. Twenty-twenty-three, five-forty-four, an ordinance approving a restated and second amended intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Springfield Township for the installation of water main for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent, second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Public Works, twenty-twenty-three, five-forty-five, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of appropriation authority in the amount of eight-hundred-thousand dollars from line budgeted for motor fuel tax funds into lines twelve-oh-four and fourteen-oh-seven to accommodate expenses associated with Springfield Way of improvement projects and purchase of rock salt for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent, second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-forty-six, an ordinance authorizing purchase of real estate located at nine-twenty East North Grand Avenue and eleven-sixty North Ninth Street in the amount of one million, two-hundred-and-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars pursuant to an agreed judgment and order vesting title upon deposit of just compensation set by the jury verdict under Sangamon County Case Number twenty-twenty-two dash ED dash zero-zero, zero-zero, zero-one relating to the Springfield Way of Improvement Project, usable segment six B for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Larry, real quick.
Yes, Alderman.
What, so what was the, we had a juror, jury verdict, what, what's the story with this, Greg?
So this was a condemnation proceeding on a parcel of property on Ninth Street that went to, uh, we had a jury trial because the parties could not come to an agreed valuation, and this was the, um, that was the amount set by the jury, we're doing this agreed verdict and paying it, uh, so we can obtain title to proceed with the construction.
Okay, thank you.
All in favors.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-forty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate at twenty-twenty-eight South Eleventh Street from Roger Chandler, owner of the Keg Incorporated, for public purposes specifically right-of-way and temporary construction easement for a total amount not to exceed twenty-two-hundred-and-ninety dollars, including clause, clause in costs.
Motion for consent, second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-forty-eight, an ordinance approving denying the partial plan of vacation of lot three-fifty-five in Deerfield Fourteenth Edition for the Office of Public Works.
Motion to approve on consent.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-forty-nine, an ordinance annexing certain described property located at no address assigned at Woodside Township of the city of Springfield.
For consent, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-fifty, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement with Wheat Camp Holdings LLC for property located at twelve-twenty Ultron Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move for debate.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-fifty-one, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at twelve-twenty Ultron Road.
Move for debate, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-fifty-two, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of seventy-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-four dollars from unappropriated fund balance to accommodate salaries and fringe benefits for three new city garage zone managers for the Office of Public Works.
For consent.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
I got a question, quick question.
McCarlson.
Have, have two of these people already started, Director Fuchs? Okay, and then the seventy-seven thousand, I mean, is this, are they current employees? Is that seventy-seven for all three or total?
Plan is for a total of five zone managers, uh, operationally they would be assigned one to, uh, two wards, so, uh, we have, uh, this, this would basically allow for the salaries before the end of the fiscal year, and then they're all, uh, uh, provided for in next year's budget.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I'm sorry?
I got it, never mind.
Okay. Ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-seventy-one, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW twenty-four dash zero-six dash three-five with AFE Construction LLC for the construction in addition and roof at the African American History Museum in an amount not to exceed eight-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I'll be present on this and the next ordinance.
Noted. Twenty-twenty-three, five-seventy-two, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of modification to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources Grant Number MC twenty-one dash zero-three-three in an amount of two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand for an additional funding for the Springfield and Central Illinois African American History Museum Expansion Project and authorizing a supplemental appropriation of the two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand for the Office of Public Works upon Illinois Department of Natural Resources approval and modification to grant number MC twenty-one dash zero-three-three.
Motion for consent.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alderman Redpath. Alderman Redpath.
So, it, it, so this supplementing the eight, the one we just did before, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's all you need.
All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, ayes have it.
Twenty, uh, general city business, twenty-twenty-three, five-fifty-three, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D local licenses by one due to closure of business by Springfield Carriage Company, doing business as Springfield Carriage Company located at seven-twenty-four East Edwards.
Motion for debate. Am I correct?
It's consent.
It's, I consent, it's, motion for consent.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-fifty-four, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class E, and increase the number of Class D local licenses by one for Malibu Jack Springfield LLC, doing business as Malibu Jack Springfield located at twenty-five-oh-one Walmash Avenue.
Motion for consent.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-fifty-five, an ordinance authorizing the execution of agreement with Basham Government Solutions LLC under RFQ MA twenty-four dash eighteen for the professional lobbying services for an amount not to exceed seventy-five-thousand dollars for the Office of the Mayor.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Uh, dis, discussion?
Yep. Chair, I, I signed up.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could give, um, we have, I know we have a representative from the lobbying firm in the, in the room, if we just give her a chance to come up and talk a little bit about her, her firm and some of the issues that maybe you anticipate we'll be dealing with, or?
Yeah, uh, good evening, everyone, uh, my name's Jessica Basham with Basham Government Solutions, um, I know that, um, you've all been provided a document with, uh, some of my background and experience information, um, but what I, I won't go into details about that unless there's any questions, but what I will say is I am incredibly excited about the opportunity to represent the city, um, as a lifelong, uh, resident of the city of Springfield, um, I'm also very excited to sit down with each of you and talk about some of the priorities that you have for your own wards, um, so with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions if there are any.
Carlson.
Yeah, Alderman Carlson.
No, I just wanted to ask, and maybe it's staff, are, are we members of the IML in this, Willie?
Yes.
Okay. And what, what do we pay a year to them?
Good question.
Corporation council? Uh, it's, it's a, it's a very minimal amount.
Okay.
I'll, I can get you the, the number.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I'm curious, yeah.
Um, I think it's a, well, I don't want to say off the record.
I mean, yeah.
It's like a thousand bucks.
Five grand, ten grand.
But less, less than that.
Less than that, okay.
Alderwoman Conley, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair, that's okay, no, it's okay, um, no, I just wanted to say, I, I thank you for coming in tonight, um, this is a fairly recent initiative for the council to have, um, money allocated for us to have a, an, a direct voice at, at the State House and, um, certainly appreciate your experience and your background, uh, there are a lot of issues that impact municipalities every day, so we expect to see you busy, I'm sure, um, just kind of for us, um, so we know, is there a plan to do sort of reporting so that we know the issues that are going on that we may be impacted by, I mean?
Ab, absolutely, and, um, you know, that's certainly something that I want to discuss with you all in the mayor's office about exactly what that looks like, um, certainly, uh, I would see likely minimally quarterly reporting, if not more frequent, um, I typically provide as frequent as weekly updates for some of my other clients, um, and, uh, something we've also discussed, uh, would be kind of constant monitoring of legislative initiatives that are happening, um, particularly during the legislative session, um, flagging things that are of particular interest, things that I see that could have a measurable impact on the city, whether that be positive or negative.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good to hear that, thank you.
Alderman Carlson, I'm sorry, I cut you off. No, I'm good, no, I'm good. Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Chair, I will be a present, but I just wanted to say to my colleagues that, um, Jessica has a wealth of experience, she's a hard worker, she's dedicated to ensuring that we receive information with, uh, the experience that she has had at the Capitol, so I encourage us all to support her moving forward.
Alderman Redpath.
So, since I've been on the city council, the biggest issue that we've faced is the pension issue with our police and fire, uh, you and I have had a discussion about that, and I know that this is a critical situation for every municipality around the state, do you foresee any kind of movement that we can provide to, to get the legislature to look at the extension of our timeframe for what, when we have to fund our pensions?
Well, Alderman, as you, I'm, I'm sure you're aware, and as, as you just pointed out, it's a serious issue that has been discussed for a number of years in Springfield, um, I think it's, uh, a matter of continuing those conversations, looking for the right timing opportunity, so, um, you know, I, I hate to say that, um, governments have been flush with cash, there's never enough resources to meet all the other priorities, but, um, these last several years have been, you know, uh, an opportunity for a lot of municipalities to grow a lot of reserves, obviously some are in better position than others, but that's probably likely to change in the next several years.
Well, the whole cul, the whole culture, the legislature's changed over the last few years and, and things are different now, uh, is there, is there any, is there any, uh, opening for us to, to make a move to try to get that, to, to not force that issue, because we don't want to force anything on them, so, anyway, to get the discussion started, because it is a problem for us, and every year we battle how much money that we're going to put into the, to the pension system, and, and we've already got a request this year to, uh, put a lot more in there, and, you know, there's only enough money just to go around, and we just got to make sure that we do our best to try to move that along if we could.
Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head, with the changing legislature and changing dynamics, there's always an opportunity to seek out those discussions and hopefully become more successful than in previous years.
I think you're the person for the job, by the way, so.
That's right.
Alderman Gregory, real quick, I just want to say, um, I, I just was over here reading, uh, um, your, your, your resume, and it's, it's quite impressive, especially the part about Southeast High School, um, but, but I, 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 I'm really, really impressed by your, by your resume, um, you know, knowing your way around the State House legislation, um, and it, and one thing that really, really sparked my interest was engaging in the budget-making process on the state level, and I think that's important to, to, um, really push off initiatives while, while, you know, everyone's thinking on how to get there, so we welcome you and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, likewise.
Alderman Carlson?
No, I'm good, that was, okay. Name is still.
Oh.
You pressed it fifteen times.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Noted, on the present, twenty-twenty-three, five-fifty-six, an ordinance submitting ordinance three-seven-six, zero-nine-two-one to correct the expenditure line regarding the agreement with Archimages Incorporated for architectural design services for up to three fire stations in an amount not to exceed seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars for the Springfield Fire Department.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion, uh, Alder, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, this is actually not entirely directly to the ordinance, um, Chief, if you want to come up, you don't have to really, I mostly just want to say, if anyone has not seen the progress that's being made on these, um, fire stations, it's really impressive, I drive by the new Station Eight on Rickard Road, it, it looks fabulous, um, really appreciate the amount of work that's going into this and the coordination, so, um, they're looking great, I'm excited to see people move in, I mean, you can come up and respond, but definitely you want to go over and, I, I just, I, I only drive by Rickard Road on a regular basis, so.
Right, uh, Station Eight is the furthest along, and, yeah, it, it does, it has walls.
It has a roof almost.
Yes, and, and again, it is furthest along, uh, Station Thirteen, it's, it's a, it's a couple of weeks behind, and then Station Six is really just at foundation level, so, but yeah, they are, they're coming along quite, uh, quite rapidly, this is simply a reclassification of where the expense is coming from, in case you wanted to know on that, but, but yeah, thank you, thanks for noticing.
It's not an increase in expenses, it's just a classification.
It is, it is, yeah.
I just wanted to applaud the, the work.
I don't know if this question's for you, Chief, or Mr. Lesko, but, uh, what, what is the, a seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollar change, can you explain what that is?
It's simply what fund it's coming out of, and it's actually probably a question for, uh, uh, Director Metzger.
Okay, so it's not a, it's not a, a addition to the, to the money that we put in.
Am I right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-fifty-seven, an ordinance authorizing additional budgetary headcount by twenty-one and requesting a supplemental appropriation in the amount of three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents to cover additional costs for salary and the January twenty-twenty-four rookie class in FY twenty-four for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Uh, discussion, Alderwoman Conley?
Nope, I'm still on there from last time.
Okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, five-fifty-eight, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of one million, fourteen-thousand, five-hundred dollars to cover additional salary costs in FY twenty-four for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move to consent.
Second. Let me discuss, I'm sorry.
Discussion, Alderman Williams?
So, um, can, can you explain this, Chief, for me, please, because it's additional, I believe.
It is additional, uh, so when we budgeted last year, we knew we were going to be short, even at that time, um, Alderman Hanauer recognized that we were going to be short and added some money to the ti, to our line at that time, um, and we knew because we haven't hired that that overtime line was going to be, uh, was going to grow, uh, with your report that I sent you last month and then the one I sent this month, you can see why it is, uh, and, and where those, um, where we are hurting at, you know, not having enough people to staff to meet that minimum manning that's required causes overtime.
Is that projected to improve, or?
So if we hire and continue to hire annually, uh, it will improve, it will reduce the amount of overtime that we pay out each year, um, and so we, we are trying to project a realistic budget number for next year, um, realistically, we had projected that we would be about three-point-two million last year, but what was in our actual budget was much lower, and it was recognized at that time, but it was decided to proceed with the number and then to come back later, and so we are here, um, I didn't, um, I didn't think we would get this late in the year before I'd come back to see you, to be honest.
Thank you, Chief.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Chair, um, and Chief, I just was thinking, we had a, have a quick conversation about this earlier, um, and obviously what this represents is a lot of extra time for the people that you have, so I'm very pleased that we have the preceding ordinance where we're, we're starting to hire and continuing to do that, I, I certainly, um, look forward to, you know, assisting in any way and promoting when you're, when you're putting out the new classes, when you're looking for, you know, new staff to come on, because, um, yeah, this, this is a big dollar amount, but what I see is people who are working a lot more hours, and, and this has been going on for years now.
Right, right, the union has really stepped up and has been filling those hire backs, so yes, it is a, a large dollar amount, but that is actual labor hours that the people who have been working are putting in additional, and they've expressed that they are, are tired, you know, and so the, the preceding ordinance will help, will, it'll help to, uh, to boost morale, and it'll, it'll also help to bring the overtime line down.
Bring some younger people in.
Yes.
But also, I, I just, um, I should have thought of something, and then it just went out of my head, so, oh, no, that's, um, thank you again for, for coming back with the reports, because, you know, having had those already, I, I was prepared for this ordinance, um, I, I figured it was coming eventually, uh, I agree, I thought, I was actually a little surprised you made it until almost December, so, well done on that, but, um, yeah, if, if we could just continue to get those reports so that we can expect what's coming, appreciate it, thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Chair, um, one of the things I, I, I do want to bring up, and it's more for upcoming budget mayor and, and, and Ramona and that, I think that we need to go back and look and see what our average of overtime was, um, for the past five years, uh, we've been playing this game where we know that the overtime's, let's say, three million dollars, and we only put a, a million dollars in their overtime, we know, we, I, I, and I don't under, I, I said it back during budget season, I don't understand why we play this game, it makes our budget look good, but we know we're going to, we're, we're going to get hit for this extra cost, you know, now, I, I would like to see where we're at, how we've done this year compared to past years on overtime, because we have hired some people, we've had hi, we've hired a class the year before, and we keep hearing, well, we keep hiring, and, and overtime's going to go down, and I, I, I just want to see where we're at total compared to past years too, so. I'll be happy to get you a historical report over the past five years and see. But I would just ask for budget, let's be real about this on, on the overtime, I, this, this game of only putting a million dollars in when, when we know that, that number isn't correct, um, I, I still don't understand why we did it unless it was to try to, to make the budget look better, or I don't, I don't know, but. Right, I can't answer that either, so. Yeah, so, thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
So, you know that we are adding a firehouse, so that's what, twelve, twelve officers, twelve firefighters going that way, so that's going to, that's going to change our numbers again, so that's going to, that's going to be an issue for budget that we got to think about, because it's still going to have a, a higher overtime budget than, than we would really like, even though we're going to add more people, we're moving people that are not going to cover the, the first twelve firehouses, does that make sense? So we got to think about that when we go into the budget. My next question to you is, the, the minimum manning number, is that an executive decision is that an executive decision, or is that done by contract?
By contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, Chief, I appreciate you coming tonight and, and informing us. The prior ordinances are much appreciated. The reports are critical, and, and, and that gives us an idea as we go along. But, you know, in the past practices, it's really been frustrating at times is when we get this correction made even after the fiscal year, which I think is ridiculous. So, we're not even close to the end of the fiscal year. I know it goes until into February, and I appreciate this ordinance and keeping us in the loop. And if things get worse, I know you'll be back, so. Thank you.
I hope not to, but yes, you, you're correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, five fifty-nine. An ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to Richland Community College doing business as Macon County Law Enforcement Training Center for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Second. Discussion, Alderman Redpath?
Um, that's from, that's from my last one, I'm sorry.
You got it clear.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, five sixty. An ordinance authorizing purchase of mini-caliber robot COFMDM and accessories from I-C-O-R Technology for an amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-six cents for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, I'm sorry.
Just real quick, if, if the Chief could come up and explain what this is.
Certain details I'd like to not disclose publicly, but it's.
Whatever, whatever you can. How's that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I did have someone ask me, why is the police department buying a robot?
Well, it's, it's actually an essential part of a lot of the operations within our agency, specifically SWAT-related procedures. If there's anything that we can do to deescalate situations to where it's not an officer on suspect encounter, then we certainly want to, to do that. And, and by sending in, you know, technology components, you know, we have drones, we utilize those also. We have K nine, so this is just one more facet of that, that we can use in various job-related functions.
Thank you. And again, I had, I had someone reach out and ask about it, so I appreciate you coming up and, and giving an explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay there. Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, five sixty-one. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of new radio antennas for the Department of Emergency Communications and its users of the seven-hundred and eight-hundred MHZ radio system in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion for consent.
Second. Alderman Redpath?
So, Chief, explain what we're doing here. Is that the replacement of the ones that we have on top of the Form thirty?
It is, and I'm going to defer to Chief Candy, because those antennas actually are his primary radio antennas, so he may have a little bit better understanding.
Way to pass the buck. Yeah. It's good. Yeah, it's simply the one that broke off during the der- deration, and it's to put it back on. We have moved on to a new system, but this is, putting it back on provides us all the backup radio now.
Now, now, what radios are we using? The Starcom system?
We are. And that's our primary.
Why do we need, we don't need a repeater for that, though, do we?
This is for the backup system.
Oh, the backup system, okay. And why are we putting it back up there? I thought we were going to look at a different place.
It's, we've looked, and that seems to be, what they're telling me is, that's the tallest part in all of Springfield, and that's where everything else is at. And so, the infrastructure's already there, and so, that's why they're putting it back.
Okay. The AT&T, the AT&T location's not high enough?
I don't, I, I'm, that's above my technology grade, I'm sorry.
Well, remember the discussion we got into last year with this?
Right, yes, yes.
And I, I don't want to give any compensation to that at all.
I know.
And that's, that's, that's exactly where I'm at on that. Sorry.
I understand.
Thank you.
If I could add just one point to that, and that is that Sangamon County is actually upgrading their radio system, and they have four Starcom towers located throughout the entire Sangamon County. And that's something that the city could potentially piggyback on and get on board.
But those are repeater systems, though?
It's the same eight-hundred megahertz Starcom system, yes. So, that may be an alternative to putting something high on a building.
Right. Thanks, you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty twenty-three, five sixty-two. An ordinance authorizing expanded spot shotter coverage consisting of additional one point zero square mile and additional payment of two hundred and ten thousand dollars over a three-year period with sound thinking incorporated for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion for consent.
Second. Discussion, just a little discussion. Alderman Gregory?
Uh, Chief, I, and, and, and all of these, great, they were part of the Community Connections grants. Is it your plan to start rolling out more of those, getting all your equipment and, and getting all that passed to us?
Yeah, there's a couple here tonight. I just send the emails out to some other individual companies that are going to be partnering with us or mentoring opportunities that we have discussed at length. So, yes, the, the goal is to finally start to utilize the funds that are available to us.
Right. And this is just expanding our, our, our spotter.
The, the area is already expanded. We have five point two-five square miles of shot spotter coverage throughout the city, and this is paying for one of those square miles.
All right, thank you, sir.
This is not a direct question on this ordinance, but when we use the eye in the sky, is that a recorded camera?
That's a good question. I do not believe those are recorded unless we can function those to where.
So, when we put those through critical areas where we need them right now, what are they doing? Then, are they, are they recording? Is it a direct line?
So, they're essentially all, we have apps on our phones, so lieutenants that are, are working the, the shift have access to that, or neighborhood police officers have access to that. And, and I'm not so sure that they're not recorded, I just don't have the exact address.
I just talked to a lady that their neighborhood's getting hit with burglaries right now, and I was, I told her to call you tomorrow, and maybe we can get.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, five sixty-three. An ordinance authorizing acceptance and proposal under RFPCS nineteen dash twenty-nine and the execution of agreement with Jamie Brits for the sale of city-owned property consisting of two parcels located in nine forty and nine forty-four North Fourth Street in an amount of one thousand dollars for the Office of Budget Management.
Motion for consent.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, five sixty-four. An ordinance authorizing acceptance and proposal under RFPCS nineteen dash twenty-nine and execution of agreement with Rhoda Lumalino in a purchase of city-owned property consisting of one parcel located at seventeen oh five East Miller Street in the amount of five hundred dollars for the Office of Budget Management.
Motion for consent.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, five sixty-five. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of proposal under RFPCS nineteen dash twenty-nine and execution of an agreement with Charles B. Jefferson, Jr. for the sale of city-owned property consisting of one parcel located in nineteen sixteen East Pine Street in the amount of five hundred dollars for the Office of Budget Management.
Motion for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, five sixty-six. An ordinance amending Chapter thirty-eight, Section thirty-eight point five oh, the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances is amended by authorizing the purchase of personal property supplies and services in cooperation with National Joint Purchasing Alliance, Sourcewell, Omnia Partners, for the Office of Budget Management.
Move for consent.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, five sixty-seven. An ordinance authorizing execution of agreement with Azivar Audit Solutions Incorporated to perform hotel and motel room tax compliance reviews by the City of Springfield within its corporate boundaries for the Office of Budget Management.
Move for consent.
Second.
All in favor? Discussion, I'm sorry. Alderman Conley?
Thank you, sorry, Chair. I have a lot of questions tonight. I just, I wasn't quite sure how we handle this audit currently. I'm not sure who would be the one to answer that. Oh, good. And you don't have to move around.
So, Azivar, they have done our hotel, motel, and franchise audits in the past. A few years ago, Comcast, they were able to recover, I believe it was one point three million dollars. They, this is not to engage them for audit at this time. Instead, they have offered the use of their new software for us, for our hotel, motel, and that would be audited as they come in.
So, that would be your office doing this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, five sixty-eight. An ordinance authorizing a two-year agreement with HSHS Medical Group to administer pre-employment, post-employment, and fit-for-duty medical examinations, random reasonable suspicion, return-to-work, and post-accident drug and alcohol testing services for potential new hires and current employees in the workplace for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for the Office of Human Resources.
Motion for consent.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, five sixty-nine. A resolution referring a petition to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission for public hearing and consideration proposing an amendment to Chapter one fifty-five, Section one fifty-five point zero four nine, special provisions for residential uses in the inner city.
Move for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-three, five seventy. An ordinance authorizing CHDO grant agreement, number twenty-three dash zero one, with Gross International Incorporated, for the use of city home funds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars for rehabilitation and property located at fifteen twenty-nine East Edward Street through the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move to consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Any unfinished business?
Uh, I have a, I'd like to make a request that, a motion to, we're coming up to the budget stuff right now. Over the years that we've done this, we've, we've rotated that. I think it's important now that we're getting to a point where we need to concentrate heavily on this. And I'm going to make a motion that we name a full-time chairman for the budget, for the budget hearings only. And I wanted to make a nomination of Jim Donlin to do that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, did we need to do anything special, Corporation Council?
You need to ask if there's any opposed.
Any opposed?
No, that'll carry it.
Thank you.
Present.
Right. Noted.
Uh, new business. So, that's a new, is that new business, I guess?
It's whatever you want to call it.
Citizens request to.
Well, you got more people to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Gregory, I'm sorry.
It's all right, it's all right, Larry. Alderman Rockford, excuse me. I, I just want to follow up on a conversation we had last week. I know it's getting, you know, cold. We're gonna have a few days in the fifties, but there has been some concerns about the young, the gentleman on, on Marley the King. Among, among all of our homeless individuals out, I do know we have our Salvation Army center on Eleventh, and I do believe it's twenty-four hours. So, that's great. And I know they're supposed to leave and go to Dirkson location, which, which we look forward to. And, and, and I just think that him and, and anyone else out there, we just need to really, really try to push to get them inside. You know, the last thing I want is, you know, sitting watching for six, seven months on, you know, in good weather, and then something happens to him out here in the cold weather. So, I think we really need to push for that. And then, finally, Chief's outside, but I, I, I really, really, I, I love the move. I think it's going to be a good move. But we had some issues over there recently. And, and, you know, I, I think that, that the citizens in this council, you know, deserves some type of update on, on how that facility's going to be safe going forward, you know, and, and how we're going to make sure that, that a gun never gets in that facility again, so we don't have, have to deal with these, these tragedies, especially if we're going to put, you know, a hundred and forty of our homeless citizens over there. I think that's really, really important. And, you know, me and Chief have had some discussions about that before they go, so, thank you.
Alderman Purchase?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Alderman Gregory, and I think public works, because I told you all last week that the homelessness is next door to me. They didn't carve the hole in the cardboard to watch me, and they cut the utilities off to that place today. So, hopefully, we're keeping that boarded up or giving some attention to it so that they don't have places to go to and houses that has been abandoned by homeowners for over two or three years. And then, thank you to everyone who gave for giving Tuesday today at the YMCA. We did really well. And just wanted to give a friendly reminder that we're still collecting donations for laundry detergent, and we have until Friday, December first. So, anyone who would like to donate around a horseshoe, too, you're more than welcome to do that by Friday, December first. Thank you.
Okay, Clerk, citizens sign up to speak?
Joe McMeniman. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've had a better, a, a lower count of ordinances tonight than two weeks ago, when you had thirty-nine. Tonight, you've got twenty-eight. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I just wanted to complete a couple of thoughts as a concerned citizen from two weeks ago, and, or was it one week ago? So, on the, there were three ordinances having to do with the police. And one of those ordinances had to do with the collective bargaining agreement, and I've already mentioned what I said about that. I was really concerned about the thirteen percent in one year and the impact it can have on encouraging retirements and, because people would want to spike their pension. And I don't mean to offend anyone when I talk about spiking the pensions, but when I came on the council and, and sat in Ward Seven's seat, you know, we worked hard to eliminate the fire pension spiking, the police fire, the police pension spiking. And then, I didn't realize that there was spiking going on with everyone else with IMRF at retirement. They were taking huge cash outs, and then that was being calculated into their pension calculation. I think Alderman Hanauer and some of the others remember that cleanup that we did. So, pension has always been on my, on my radar. And in fact, that's why I voted eleven out of twelve budgets were no budgets on my part. You know, it wasn't, didn't make any difference whether it was Mayor Houston or Mayor Langfelder. I thought we weren't devoting enough time to taking care of our pension debt. And I, you know, I'm glad, Alderman Redpath, you discussed that earlier tonight with the new lobbyists that we have. So, and so, please don't take anything I say as personal or political. I'm here as a concerned, concerned citizen that just wants to be heard, who's thought about these things. So, I mentioned the, the three police contracts. I'll really speed up now. There was one of those police ordinances that was for a sign-on bonus and then a retention bonus. And what I wanted to say last week was, you know, that comes from, that's a grant, so it's not our money, true enough. And it comes from the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board. Prior to last week's meeting, I read through their thirty-page grant document, and what I saw in there was that whatever our police chief submitted as part of his plan, he can amend it. He can amend that budget, what he submitted. So, my recommendation would be just put that one point four million dollars into our corporate fund, because the collective bargaining agreement itself, giving over a fifty percent raise to our new patrolman, that's a bonus enough, isn't it? And same with all the other pay raises there. So, that was one comment. The other comment was, last week, you passed, the council passed an ordinance giving the mayor exclusive authority and, and discretion to grant senior police command staff whatever raise she wants to give them. And I think that departs too strongly from past practice, where the mayor had to come to the city council to get approval for any pay raise above five percent. The way that ordinance is written, it's got no sunset clause. So, you're, this council gave the mayor authority to give unlimited pay raises to command staff, not just during this twelve-month period, but the next twelve-month period and the next twelve-month period, unless the council takes action. And there's no cap on those raises. It could be ten percent to someone, fifteen percent to somebody else, twenty percent to somebody else. There's no caps. And there's no accountability. There's no requirement that the mayor come back to the council and say, what has she just done? So, you know, I was upset when, when Mayor Langfelder gave Chief Winslow a pay raise towards the end of his career to try to keep him here in the city. I was upset when Mayor Dablin gave then-Chief Caldwell a late-career pay bump right before he left city employment. He was, by the way, the first police officer that began earning a hundred thousand dollar a year pension. So, I'm at thirty-eight seconds. So, this has nothing to do with our current chief. It has to do with accountability, transparency, and good budgeting. So, I hope you take it in that light. I'd much rather be at home tonight. I had a great Thanksgiving. I hope everyone else did. And I hope I don't have to be back here anytime soon. And, and especially if you're a senior alder, you know, dig into some of these ordinances, because you've got the experience and judgment and the recollection of what's happened in the past, and we don't want it to happen again. I got two seconds left, and I'm done. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you.
Alice Ramey?
Actually, Chair, sorry, Chair.
Yo, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just got this real quick. I, I would just like to reiterate, that ten percent raise that was included in the amounts that we allocated last week was the result of a vote that had taken place with a council, a prior council. Actually, the council that, that Mr. McMeniman was a part of. So, just want to clarify that that, that was, that ten percent was not, I'm sorry, I'm talking just to the Chair. But that ten percent was, had already been allocated. We're just, or had already been voted on. We were simply allocating those funds. Thank you, Chair.
Very briefly, can I just respond to that?
Oh, briefly.
Um, so.
No.
Okay.
Just the Chair.
Thank you. Alice?
No, thank you. I'll wait for next time.
Okay, thank you. Clerk?
All right. Paul House.
Mr. House, please, please speak here. Tell us your name and address.
Name is Paul House. I used to live at, in Springfield at two six oh nine Erie Drive. I'm a retired captain of the Fire Department.
Thank you.
And I'm not looking for you to fix this problem. I'm looking for you to address it so it doesn't keep happening to us retirees and current people. As I le- left the city, I just established care, so I called the number on the back of our insurance card for out of area, found doctors that they said were in, they were planned participants. In the meantime, I think I have a kidney stone, get a CT. I have stage four cancer. Every doctor that I have called PHCS and I got approved that they are, in fact, planned participants, has been denied multiple times when they call for treatment. I was supposed to start my first round of chemo the week of November twelfth. I have not yet even had the drugs approved. They've only approved the anti-nausea medicine. They did finally approve a port, which I'm getting in two days. But what I want you guys to understand, you just gave this company more money last month. Trustmark. Everything is on Trustmark. I call Trustmark, the first person tells me, out of network, you're not covered. I fight all the way up to a senior advisor. They tell me, oh, yeah, because I called PHCS. These people are now, yeah, you're covered. Go. The hospital is, the oncologist is, the radiologist that did the needle-guided biopsy is. I have in my possession, because this all started like October twelfth, a month ago. I have possessions that I just got from my doctor's office, where Trustmark has sent them to another company for approval for the actual chemo drugs. And they have sent me the emails back that state, we don't do this, you do. So, they are delaying my treatment. My treatment was supposed to start November, the week of November twelfth, and I am still not even scheduled. I've even asked IU Health to put me as a self-pay payer, so I can just pay for it myself and get my treatment started. It's stage four. It's basically from the base of my skull to my pelvis. It's in my vert- It's in my vertebrae, it's in my diaphragm. These are things that they need to stop it before I have permanent issues like paralysis or need to be ventilator-dependent. And that's all I have to say.
Can Alderman Hanauer?
Uh, I guess the question would be for staff or, or the mayor even, do we have an ombudsman?
I have talked to Julie at Trustmark.
Well, hold, hold on, hold on. Do we have someone on staff that can get with you and get with the insurance company and, and get this? To me, you're right, this is ridiculous. And if they're not going to be responsive, we need to look at another solution.
I'm like, why do I go get the port on Thursday if you're not going to approve the chemo to go through it?
And, and, and I, I understand, I, 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 you know, we're, I just want to try to get something rectified quickly for you.
I thought I had the senior advisor, Julie B.,
Well, but it's a little different if the city calls.
At Trustmark, speaking to IU Health.
Okay.
Hi. Can you step out?
Go ahead. Thank you.
I just want you to know that that's who you hire and that's what kind of service they're giving you.
Thank you.
You're going to dress as Nicky. But thank you.
Any other citizens request to speak? Listen to adjourn.